While there are many data points to celebrate, I want to focus on one in particular, and that's our K five reading achievement. So we have done so far two diagnostic tests this school year. The first one was in September. Twenty-nine percent of our students were at or above grade level, twenty-nine percent in September, and that was eighty-two kids. In January, the second, fifty percent of our students are at or above level, and that went up to one hundred and forty-four kids. So it's a lot more kids doing more better. And then the other part of the data that I wanted to share with you is that we're also looking at the students who are have really been affected by COVID and have struggled to pick up literacy skills. So the September one diagnostic test, thirty-one percent of students were two or more grade levels behind. So there were eighty-four kids in that data point. And in January, that thirty-one fell to only twenty percent of our students, two or more grade levels below grade level, and that's at fifty-eight kids. So the other day Javier sent an email to the staff that I read during the staff meeting, and one of the phrases said, what you do matters. And we had a great staff meeting yesterday, and I shared this with the staff, and it really is true. What they're doing, implementing the curriculum, getting students engaged, really is making a difference. So I'm proud of our staff and our kids and our families for that recent achievement. Tomorrow, we know not tomorrow, next Wednesday, February seventh, from five to six thirty, is our Love of Reading Night to support literacy. It has a mystery theme. There'll be an escape room, a reader's theater, and some free books for all families. I want to thank Sarah Instrom for her leadership in making this happen. And lastly, public thanks to Garrison's Home Furnishings. They donated a new mattress to a family for a kid. That's great. Like, you sleep well, you'll learn well, and I want to thank Katie McCormick for her work in supporting community too. So, thank you. Next.
Do I need to go up here? Okay, thanks. Good evening, board. My name is Shauna Schlafe, principal at Phoenix Elementary School. Good to see you all. It's been a great start to 2024. First of all, after our last board positives, I wanted to share that like I had forgotten to talk about how amazing when we came back from break, our campus was clean and pristine. Our maintenance department and our custodians did a lot of work over Christmas break or winter vacation. So I just want to give a big shout out to Andrew and to Malcolm Dustin, and then we have Angelo joining us from time to time. And so they're just a real great crew that keep our campus clean and safe. This last few weeks since we've been back from break, we've been diving into a lot of work with our teachers around engagement. So our ELD instructor Carrie Baker and our coach Jenny Brown led a professional development workshop that modeled really great strategies for our teachers, and our teachers have been taking these strategies and implementing them right away. So it's really fun to see that. And then following two weeks later, our coaches then met with all elementary school teachers and did further work on engagement strategies. And it's just really awesome to see. Yesterday, we had our core review meeting, which is where we look at all of our mid-year data. And I'm really happy to report that at PES, our reading, five out of six of our grades are above average in their reading growth, which in order to get to results and achievement results, you have to show growth first. And so we're really working on closing our achievement gaps. So I'm excited to show positive gains there. And our staff is really proud of that. And then finally, wanted to, oh yeah, that was my final thing. So I'll make up one more that we do have a family engagement night coming up on a, it's called a Love of Learning Night. It's the night after Valentine's Day, and we're going to be doing some potluck style classroom meetings. And so we're excited to bring families in for that. And so I'll report on that next time. Thanks, Shauna. Good evening, everybody. Heather Lowe from Talent Elementary. Nice to see everyone. I would say, well, ditto to all of those things because we're, we do the same things. It's weird. But at Talent, we specifically are really welcoming February with heart in many different ways. We're starting a Healthy Heart Challenge through the American Heart Association, where we'll be raising money to support their cause. So that kicks off next week. Also, on that same week that Shauna is going to have her family engagement night, we are too, on the thirteenth, which is also our Spirit Week and our book fair. So it's going to be kind of a festive week for us for a month, really. So I'm excited about that. We did have our core review as well yesterday, and really excited about our data, really trending up over the last several years. So super proud of our staff, especially in the area of reading, which I really attribute to our adoption of our new curriculum. It's making really good progress with our kids and, you know, just the work of our coaches and pacing guides and making sure that we're holding kids and staff to these high standards. And then lastly, just want to give a shout out to Cheryl. We've had kind of a really rough last month of sickness. Oh, my God. Just a lot of, a lot of flu, COVID, all of the things going around our late nights, early mornings, trying to get coverage.
Thank you, Heather. My name is Catherine Holden. I'm the principal of Talent Middle School. It's nice to be here tonight. Our positives tonight, we wrapped up our semester one, of course, like everybody else, and we had a really fun pause celebration day to celebrate the good work that everybody did. And overall, our students have done a really great job of transitioning into semester two. It just, again, felt so much smoother in the second year. We didn't have to change as many schedules, and so that really made it a nice transition for both staff and students. And our staff have been working hard to set expectations again, just be really clear and explicit about what they expect in their classrooms, and the students are rising to that occasion once again, as well as we have a few new enrichment classes. So we just wanted to thank Sandra Tringalo, Peter Daney, and Alita Mark for taking on something new mid-year, so that our students have a more kind of enriched experience throughout the year. We also want to give a big shout out to some great work with our partners at Resolve. They've been on campus quite a bit more lately. And right now, our sixth grade students are taking part in the Resolve Bullying and Intervention and Bystander Empowerment Program, which is also known as Choice Point. So they're doing some really great learning around kindness and empathy and empowerment. And our staff also got to spend time with Resolve yesterday for a training that was a really, a great training, but also a really sweet time with the staff where we did a nice check-in. And we've really enjoyed having that support from Resolve. Also, we wanted to just share some exciting work that our student success team has been doing, digging into data even more, looking at our growth in the winter eye-ready diagnostic. And we've just been really systematizing our intervention process and trying to kind of capture, you know, our staff is doing so many different things, but we're doing a better job of capturing where those things are happening, who's getting that support, and maybe some of the students that we need to really make sure are getting more support. At today's meeting, we had some great conversations about student attendance and how we can also continue to move toward our strategic plan goals. And we wanted to give a big shout out to that team, which includes Misty Hutzel, Peter Edwards, Derek Rodman, Jamar Boyd, Felipe Reyes, Free Bates, and Yesenia Solerzano, as well as Allison Haas and myself. And then I did want to just say a shout out to Allison Haas. She covered for me while I was out for a few days a week ago, and she did a great job. The team did a great job, but I just really want to hats off to Allison for running the ship. She was a pro. So, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure Aaron didn't have to go before me. Good evening, everyone. Always a great day on the pirate ship, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about some activities that have been happening. Last night, we hosted a home wrestling meet that went just amazingly. And at the same time, our wrestlers were doing that, we had a J-Pal Cheer Clinic, which has had the highest attendance that any cheer clinic has had in quite a while. That's where Aubrey is right now. And so we just want to shout out to both the wrestling coach and our cheer coach, both relatively new, and just really doing a great job bringing kids into the fold and making sure everybody belongs. We'll have our J-Pal Cheer Program perform at our halftime show tomorrow at our varsity football game. Nope, basketball game. That's where we're at right now. And we also have a dance that I'm sure our students will talk about here in just a bit. We also wanted to shout out to our swimming program. Because of the Rogue X facility, we've been able to actually go and watch our swimmers at home swim meets the last couple of weeks, and that is phenomenal. It's a great sport, and we have great coaches who are just encouraging students. So we wanted to shout out to David Ford and Stephanie Knutson, who are two of our coaches, who do a great job. We also had a wonderful weekend at Equestrian. Our Equestrian team ended up, their meet in first place last weekend. Just a lot of hard work, a small core group of students who are working really hard in a sport that isn't always recognized. So I want to make sure you guys know about that. We also, a couple of weeks ago, met our Sparrow, Giovanni, who's actually a student of ours. You might know him. And we had an amazing Sparrow Assembly. We have two leadership students who are our Sparrow Chairs, and they've done a great job just making sure Giovanni is well taken care of and well-known. We already have fundraisers that are going on for our Sparrow. So we also have some staff members who made that happen. So we wanted to shout out to Kelly Seaborg, who's one of Joe's teachers, Yaneth Garcia, who's our student manager, but has an awesome relationship with that family, and also Lisa Robin, who works great with our Sparrow Club partners, Matt and Kena Sampson. And it's always a pleasure to have them on our campus. Two other things I want to make sure you know about is, and these things kind of make me swell with pride, I got emotional the last couple of days about them. But first, our staff participated in an amazing professional development yesterday afternoon that our instructional coach Alyssa Barber put on, and we were able to watch videos of several of our teachers and use a document that we created called Anchored in Learning to identify where students were engaged, where there was rigor found in their classrooms. It was just great to watch magic happening in our building, even though people can't always leave their classroom. We were able to do that through video. And we also, much like Shauna mentioned, we had our staff participate in Student Talk Engagement Strategies, and they learned five different strategies that they're hoping to employ over the next couple of weeks to make sure we're getting students up, moving and talking. And it was just as a principal, finally getting able to talk about instruction, this is really amazing. So we're very proud of that. And then lastly, today, our school counselors got together with Kelly Soder to continue to create a comprehensive school counseling plan for the high school, which is no small task. And they spent several hours and got amazing work done. And so they are making sure that we're hitting ASCA standards, and our kids are getting everything that they need, both in the social-emotional realm, as well as college and career readiness and academics. And that is a timely announcement because next week is National School Counseling Week. And so just a shout out to our Student Resources Department as a whole, who just rocks it all the time. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Aaron Santi, Phoenix Town Rising Academy Principal. Our PTRA kids have had a few cool in-person activities this last month. A couple of weeks ago, our students came in and made some lava lamps with oil and water and food coloring and Alka-Seltzer, which is really pretty cool. And we also got a chance to go to Science Works and play with some of their Rube Goldberg machines and also build some of our own. So that was kind of neat. I also want to thank Talent Middle School, the administration over there, as well as Brett Easton, the music teacher. They've been able to facilitate some of our students continuing to take band classes while they're registered with us at PTRA. So trying to continue to, you know, allow students to participate in band, hopefully continue to feed our district music program while still being able to participate in our online program. So that's, thank you guys very much for that. And finally, I want to thank all of our talented gifted building coordinators. We currently have fifty-five tag students in our district, and our coordinators have to write plans, do paperwork, conduct meetings, and then arrange services for all of those kids and make sure that they're individualized and appropriate. And so these guys do that on top of all their other work. So that's Erica Cazarrati here at OHS, Allison Bailey at PES, Heather Wolf at Talent Elementary, Tara Dean at TMS, and Rhiannon Williams at the high school. So thanks to those guys. They've done some great work there with our tag students. And that's it.
Thank you. Anything from the board, Sarah?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the district staff and the staff specifically at the high school for all their help with the legislative reception, for setting everything up, and just really being like, Maria, I need. And so, big shout out to Maria and to John and really all the custodial staff for last minute. So shout out to the district and our staff for their, for their help. And then just piggybacking off the pool, I did get to go watch the swim meet yesterday, and that is a beautiful pool. Let me just tell you, that is a beautiful pool. And really great to see the pirate athletes compete. And I heard forty-seven started the year on that team. And so really excited for, for the growth of that sport. And then my friend and I had the opportunity to be at Talent Middle School in concessions last week. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Catherine and to Derek, and to Deanna and to Allison. I know Derek, Deanna has facilitated there being a concession stand, so that was great. And then Derek, he was around and helpful, whatever we needed. And, but the students, every student that came to buy a little treat, what said, thank you. And it was just a pleasure to be in the school in that space. And then there was a parent who came up to get a little treat for his daughter who's on his way out. And there was a athlete at the counter, and he said, you are a great wrestler. You did a great job. And this was a parent from Ashland, who had been visiting with us. And then he said, I think you just beat my son. But so it was really interesting to see a parent from a competitive, competitive, you know, school, thank you, compliment this athlete and, and the student, it was fantastic. So shout out to all the students and for making that happen. Super fun.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody. Next, we have citizen comments. Did we have anyone in person who wishes to speak before the board today? Anyone online, please raise your hand. Let me know if you see. Nope, okay. Moving right along. Student representative report. Hello down there. Go for it.
Yeah. My student report this week is on our school's beginning Work to Be Well Club. Our school has recently started the program of Work to Be Well, which is main, its main goal is to help prevent and deal with mental health issues. We're trying to integrate a system that where we can help people who are feeling stressed out or maybe, you know, having a hard time in their life. And we've recently started it, and we're getting our club goals down, and we're trying to think of ways to recruit new members to it before we start going on to different activities and making our school a happier, you know, more safe place.
Sorry. Hello. Okay. So my student report is on a lot of things, so I'm really sorry. I don't know how long this will take. But the first thing is that our theater program tomorrow is going to Theater Regionals. So that's a pretty cool thing. And I have some friends that are in theaters, so that's pretty cool. And then I got the chance to deliver some coats and foods to the church in Phoenix. And as we know, in December, we had the coat and the food drive. So it was just pretty cool to deliver that because I get my food at the church sometimes. So it's pretty cool to see people try to help. And before this, I went to a poster making kind of thing that we did for the game that's tomorrow, and it was pretty cool. We only had about ten people, but that's okay. That's pretty good, I think. So I'm hoping that we can have another one and that there will be more people. And speaking of the game tomorrow, after the game, there's a dance, which Miss Cross kind of touched on. But the dance, I think, I've been wanting to do this ever since November. So I think it's a really cool thing. We're trying to make it cheaper and like a more simple dance, so more people will go. It's an informal dance, like no dress code. You can wear jeans, pants, whatever you want. And many groups have collaborated on this, Leadership, BSU, the Disney Club. So it's just pretty cool to see all these people come together and make a cheaper dance for people. So, yeah.
Hi, everyone. Today, I was going to start off by talking about the Sparrow Giovanni, which Miss Cross kind of covered most of it. I know you're good. But something specific I'm excited for that we are going to do to fundraise for them is we're going to have a staff versus student basketball game, which is something we're all kind of excited for, right after the basketball season is over. So many students can participate. So we're all excited for that. I'm excited playing that. And, and moving on to that, I'm really excited for DECA at Phoenix. It has grown a lot through the last couple of years, especially from like two years ago. Mr. Ramon has done a really good job at recruiting people and just motivating them and pushing them to trust themselves to be able to perform in front of other people like that and be able to show their talent. So I'm really excited. We just did testing today. This week, we have been doing testing, going into state, preparing for a lot of us to hopefully make it to Nationals, which we are pretty confident about. And from there, I also wanted to talk about Coach Charlie Hall. He's been doing a really good job in Zero Period and taking on some new classes for weight training and just training a bunch of different athletes, being in one of his classes personally, seeing how he doesn't exclude any of the athletes and make sure that he tries to incorporate every workout to be specific for each person and their, and their sports is really cool, the way he splits that up in his warmups. And especially going into track season, that's really helpful. So that's really good. And that's pretty much all I have for today. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much. Next is superintendent report. Mr. Berry?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Campbell. As you know, first of all, thank you just for the positive, the student reports. Always just good to hear what's happening in our schools and just the excitement that going around. And Sarah, thanks for sharing that about the middle school and just pretty cool to see, you know, you know, that interaction. So, good, thanks for sharing. As you know, we do apply for a grant through the Carpenter Foundation for Academia Latina for the summer. We've been a longtime participant in that program. It's been, served us well, served our kids well, and just great to get our kids out on a college campus. We need to share that with the board that we are applying for that grant. And it's a fifteen thousand dollar grant that we will be applying for and hearing in March if we get that or not. But the Carpenter Foundation's been very good to us in that regard. Next, you saw graduation rates come out last week. We fared very well compared to our counterparts in the valley. This is a first year our district has led the valley in overall graduation rates. So, and that's a very, yeah, that's, that truly is a whole community celebration. And super proud of our kids who showed resiliency, our staff that persevered, it just worked so hard. And if you walk the halls of June at the high school, there are some tired people, adults walking around, especially after that graduation day hits. And it's just a testament to how, how much they care about these kids and how hard they work to make sure that they, we reach that milestone. So part of the reason why we were able to really kind of get that district rate up is Armadillo Community Charter Schools have increased their rates in graduation. So they were seventy-plus percent. And they don't have as many graduates, but that definitely helps our overall graduation rate. And it's definitely nice to be a little higher than our neighbors. As I mentioned before, we did do an SRO interview for our school resource officer. Thank Rick Nagel. He's not be able to be here today, but he participated in that. We are going to lose SRO whole for a promotion, but he will see oversee the SRO program. And we have a candidate that we are looking to do some final, final interviews and some next rounds and see how it works interacting with students and get a feel for the high school. So we'll keep you updated on that. Next, in your packets, you have the EST mid-year report. I want to recognize Scott Beveridge as superintendent. Thanks for sharing that with us today. And I'd like to highlight a few things. You know, I think it was evident, and Scott may mention this later when we have the service plan up for discussion, but a lot of these strategic planning really were some of the things that we shared and concerns that we may have had heading into this year. And there's a good report on what they've already developed and what they're still working on to develop for the districts. So really appreciate Scott and his team. There's been accountability systems that have been built in. We talked about CTE and having more support. There was two, two program managers for Career Technical Education added, one here, one in Klamath, which is good to see, and the service has been very good. They also did, for the first time, a three-day new teacher launch to discuss, you know, lesson planning, classroom management, engagement strategies. And it was very well put together, and I think we're going to continue that, which I think what, what resonates with me is not only new teachers that are coming out of a teaching program, but sometimes we hire CTE teachers out of industry, which we did this year, that have not necessarily been through a teaching program. And so that, that three-day kind of jumpstart was vital. And then the EST has been a leader in cybersecurity for a district our size. We need somebody to have some expertise, some checks in place, and they've been doing a good job. Well, any district size needs really solid cybersecurity measures. So appreciate that. If you have any questions on the mid-year report, we can, we can certainly answer them. And then finally, there's a special announcement tonight. We submitted a name to OSBA for a representative to represent our state for the National School Board's Rural Education Summit in New Orleans in April. And the panel met, and this student who is with us today, Javier, was selected as one of two state representatives for Oregon to join a contingent in New Orleans in April. We do have Emily Smith online. Emily, if you want to share anything, unmute yourself. Love to hear from you.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for having me. As you know, OSBA is really trying to increase the visibility for rural schools, as is the National School Boards Association. So we're putting together a rural panel. We had a lot of great submissions, and the committee was super impressed with Javier's video and just the nice things everyone had to say about him. So Javier, very excited to see you in New Orleans, and it's going to be a great, great experience.
We just found that out literally a couple hours ago, too. And so, congratulations. I know you'll represent not only our district but our state very well, and so well deserved. And congrats. Yeah. I think that's it. I don't know if anybody'd care if I had anything else to say anyway after that. So that's all I have.
Very excited. When we found out, we were all fighting over who gets to chaperone. So. All right. Congratulations. Very exciting. Okay, next we have our program report from the friends at Boys and Girls Club. Welcome. Come on up. I have to tell you, not a lot of people get cheers when they come to a program report. So some big fans of the Boys and Girls Club out there.
Thank you very much. I do have a cheering section here, which is, which is awesome. First of all, this is my, our board member, our board president, Steve Spilker. Very gratefully came on. This is my assistant executive director, Jessica King. I'm Greg Rowe. I just can't tell you how thrilled, actually, this is the first board meeting we've been to in person for years. It is so nice to be back, but thank you, board, for all you do for the community. I'll make this very brief. I just want to kind of give you an update. We were asked to give an update on what's going on because there has been some changes here in the district. I'll make this very brief. Um, I just want to kind of give you an update. We were asked to give an update on what's going on because there has been some changes here in the district, some exciting new changes and and we'll talk just a little bit about it. But for those who don't know uh about the Boys and Girls Club, we uh serve uh we're an independent nonprofit that serves uh we, yes, we belong to a national organization, but we are independent. We raise our own monies. It all comes from here. We're not government funded. Um, we're a nonprofit. And we serve roughly right around twenty-three hundred kids here in the Rogue Valley. We have six sites. Um, we have two in Illinois Valley. We have uh one huge disney pass and then we actually have three sites here in in the talent Phoenix School District. So we have uh the middle school, then we have Phoenix. Phoenix, which we just opened, then we have Talent Elementary where we've been for twenty-five plus years. Yeah, something like that. Um, our demographics here, you know, uh children who are serving, this is all the way across the borders, we're serving right around seventy-five percent of our kids are economically economically disadvantaged. And twenty-five percent of our students are are, I mean, of our kids are non-white. Um, and actually it's a lot higher here in the in the Phoenix talent area when we when we break that down even even higher. Um, the other thing people kind of miss uh uh mischaracterizes as as childcare. We are far from childcare. We are a program oriented, results-oriented, education-based programming. So the great thing about being part of the National Boys and Girls Club is we get a lot of programming uh that is 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 evidence-based. Uh, we also have a great relationship um at SO with SOU. Um, and we get some programming from them. Uh, and so it's just been a great relationship uh across the board on that. So a kid after school can expect to do homework help, STEM, art, IT, healthy habits, athletics, all kinds of fun activities. And and we're very proud of our STEM program. We're the only, up until about a month ago, we were about the old, we were the only Boys and Girls Clubs in Oregon that had its own STEM director. So we really take STEM seriously. You want to talk a little bit about the STEM program?
Hi, um, so I love talking about STEM. I think I, we partnered with the ESD a few years ago and I was felt totally with the STEM. Um, so what makes us different, and I'm not sure if anybody knows, but our staff actually does session planning templates before they do any of our programs. They do pre and post. So we can see what programs they're running, what the impacts are, what the strengths were, what challenges there were and how they would do it differently in the future. Um, and so anyway, one of the um STEM projects that they did this month, we have weekly themes and it was Community Helpers Week. And so they used B-bots that were donated by the ESD. Um, where they coded, they created community maps that were very similar to the community that they're in. dressed up the um B-bots with uh as nurses, firemen, police officers, and then they coded the bots to drive through the community and um go on rescue missions, you know, for for the little dinosaurs and other characters that they had across the community. Um, but types of um programs that we run and we do collect data on everything. And so um every that our students or our club members take. Um, and we're just analyzing some of that now. But one of the main things I want to point out is that ninety-nine percent of our club members feel that the club, they feel emotionally safe when they're at the club. And I think that's a huge number. Um, additionally, ninety-nine percent also reported that the adult staff care about them and if they have a problem, they feel comfortable going to them. So I think those are just two very important things that I wanted to share with you.
We al- we always have pictures. Um, the the other thing I think that makes it successful, especially uh is that, you know, we're we're really the affordable option in in the valley. Um, our monthly fees are only seventy-five dollars a month, and if they can't afford that, we scholarship them. Um, we also do things like family nights to redo. We also uh do family nights where they could, if they attend, they get their costs reduced. Um, for example, if you're all wanting to go to February sixteenth Sweetheart Family Dance, you're more than welcome. Um, uh, but that's gonna be, that one's gonna be at Talent Elementary. We switched back before between the two elementary schools for those programming. Um, but uh so really no kid is turned turned away ever. And we also consider ourselves a a a resource for those families too. So we're often trying to figure out what else do those families need. Um, also just, you know, a a key part of coming in here tonight, I was talking about our expansion efforts. Um, the school district asked us last year, um, Principal Shawna really helped push that one to get us opening up there at the Phoenix site, which we're very thrilled we did. Um, they were seeing about eight kids a day under the formal program somewhere around that. Now we're we're already up to forty-five kids a day after school and growing. Um, at Talent, where you see seventy-five kids a day, somewhere like that. Um, so we're seeing seeing quite a few kids and and we're and and so it's really growing. Um, and we will be expanding those numbers even more at some point. Um, that's costing us somewhere right around a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So we're, you know, trying to work out the funding, getting some more more staffs, getting staff, as you all know, is is a, has been a nightmare. So we're trying to, you know, get staff in there. Uh, but yeah, we we see nothing but expansion in those efforts. Um, the other, you know, I guess the, you know, just looking back at the last, you know, seven years that I've been here with this school district. I mean, the history of of the Boys and Girls Club and the school district working together. And we work with three school districts and this school district is really, whether it's the principals, the superintendent, or the staff, or Bill the janitor, the really, the communication here in this district is second really to none. I mean, I know all of you. Um, I can't say that with some of the others. It's just, I thought it's easy, but you guys make it easy to communicate. And that's that and that that means something uh to me. And you know, when I think a part of it went through that we went through the fire together with Albieta Fire. Our donors stepped up. You know, when we talked to Brent, when I mean, our donors in Grant's past donated a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars that went to staff and kids. I mean, I just couldn't believe it. Um, and you know, during and then COVID hit right after that. We did, we, the Boys and Girls Club is the one that stepped up and did all the the distance learning. And we and we let and we let the principals pick the kids we were gonna see. Oh, boy. So let me tell you, my staff is amazing. They're not teachers. They're they're far from teachers, but they got those kids online. Um, and and got them all past their classes and to see, is it Lena? This little kindergartner. She was a handful in kindergarten and I thought, oh, boy. This poor girl makes it out of COVID. She's gonna be a, she's a rock star. She's on our choir now. She the most beautiful young, young girl. And to see the, and all of our kids, we see all of that who have progressed. Um, but you know, the payoff payoff has been going in because we see the staff we help, we see the kids we help. Um, and it which also leads kind of the next thing. We're very excited uh about the future here. Um, if there's any kids on this planet deserve deserve a new Boys and Girls Club, it's these kids here. And so we're very thankful you thought about putting us on that master plan. Um, we also, we have, I wasn't sure about the technical setup, but we even actually have some conceptual drawings and videos that we've shown Brent. We're really planning on a twenty-five thousand square foot state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art facility that will serve the talent Phoenix kids there on that Cobble Ridge property. And it is gorgeous. Anybody wants to come see it, I'll give you a tour. I can, I mean, if you want to meet about it, let me know. Any of you board members want to look at it or whatever. It's good to be beautiful. But um we're very excited about the future. We've been waiting for twenty-five years to find a, find a piece of property. And so this is, you know, we're really at the at the cusp of doing something really amazing for these kids. And then we can also be, you know, a resource for the outdoor school if if when if and when that goes into. So we're very, very, very excited about it. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did we, just want to check with our board members who are online. Did you all have any questions? Just want to check in with you real quick. I should have done that earlier for many things, but. Don, Don, yep. She literally has her hand up.
Okay. Sorry. Um, when Nancy and I were at Washington DC, this came up about Boys and Girls Club and helping with homework. And I was wondering what supports on homework does the district give you so you can um so we can make sure the kids are getting as much help and support as needed? That was a question was asked, and I didn't know how much support we gave the Boys and Girls Club.
You know, the other good thing about the talent school district is we're actually in the two schools. And so what that does, unlike our Grant's Past site, which is standalone, our staff at the Talon and 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 Phoenix Elementary Schools actually interact with the staff. And they see the kid, you know, they know who the teachers are for the kids. And so not only are they talking to the staff, to the, to the to the staff about homework, but they're also talking about, you know, we're having an issue with behavior. We'll go uh talk to Ms. Heather or Ms. Shawna, and then we'll talk to the teachers. And so that's really the great thing again about the school district. The communication here is second to none, and we work with three and the other school districts are wonderful, but this one, their communication lines are just second to none.
Thank you.
Don, can I add to that? Because they're also on our campus, we sometimes keep kids after school that then their parents would have to come pick them up, but then we'll keep them for after-school tutoring and then they can then go to the club too. So our staff still has access to them to provide enrichment or or extra tutoring as well in partnership.
Yeah, we're also very lucky in that, you know, a lot of our 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 staff have been SOU students over the year. A lot of them are education students, so we're getting three in next week that are from the education department that are gonna be working with kids. Um, I like being the alumni president at SOU, so that helps. But anyways, I hope to keep that, I hope to keep that flood coming this way. So um, but uh, but yeah, so that'd be homework is it that's uh our our kids, you know, it's making it fun. I, but I still, still my pride and joy is that STEM program because we were making science and technology, engineering, arts and math fun for these kids. And that's where I think you know, you're just, you're promoting that learning and those kids are having a fun time doing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions. I just have a quick comment. Um, I love the Boys and Girls Club ever since I went to elementary school at Talon Elementary, I don't know, years and years ago. Boys and Girls Club is a great program.
Here, here. Thank you, Rebecca.
I just have one comment and uh he kind of um started with it a little bit, just how quickly it could expand and the need for affordable after-school care. And it's not just after-school care, it's after-school learning, it's after-school experience. Um, and to go to forty-five kids pretty quick at one school is is the need. So uh really excited about the future and and thanks for everything.
All right. Next is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. I second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nancy. Any objections? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. Action items. First item is uh policy LBE. Just a reminder, we reviewed these at our last meeting.
No, just that uh red uh recommended our mandatory language for these, both of these uh policies.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the policy language changes as presented in policy LBE Public Charter, Public Charter Schools.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nancy. Holly. She was about to. Okay, we will vote. Nancy.
Yes.
Sarah. Holly.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
I vote yes. Policy is approved. Next item I two, policy LDEA Resident Student Denial for Virtual Public Charter School Attendance.
I move to adopt the policy language changes as presented to policy LDEA Resident Student Denial for Virtual Public Charter School Attendance.
I second that.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Nancy. All right. Any discussion on this? I forgot to ask that last time, but it was like red statutory language that we can't change anyway. So thank you legislature. Okay, um Nancy.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Polly.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
I vote yes. Mandatory policies. Okay, uh, we have a recess. Let's take ten minutes. We'll be back at six fifty-five. Welcome back, welcome. Uh, first item under information and discussion is the facilities and bond update.
Yeah, John wasn't able to be here, but he did want to uh me to share that the tennis courts are have been submitted, uh, the plans have been submitted to the city. There were still uh. We're really excited about it. There, uh, I think both parties feel pretty good about it. They did want a soil test and so we are gonna uh do that. That shouldn't take too much time uh to get going. The last one we did uh did not necessarily qualify for this. This I could be doing mainly where the building is standing right now, so they wanted additional soil testing. And um, so that's that's good. We feel good about that and we'll keep you updated on that progress.
Excellent. Any questions? Okay, uh, financial update.
Uh, we don't have a financial official financial update. We try to do that in the second uh meeting of the month, but I will say discussions have been happening around ADM security and, you know, we're coming to the end of that after next year and districts are looking at the impact of that. Um, I think what we shared was uh from the very get go that we feel like we could have, you know, four years of staff attrition and student enrollment. And what's happened is we've we've really done a lot of staff attrition and we just haven't had our students come back. Will they come back uh before the end of next year? What we are hopeful. I think there's been some things that have not worked in our favor as far as delay for some housing projects. You know, you knew about the manufactured homes, hundred and twenty-five that had to be sent back that we're waiting to be put in. And then when they when that uh development was ready that they it just didn't work. So um. So those things aren't working in our favor. Pam Marsh again is uh someone that uh always in in our court and the legislative reps for the other two school districts uh have been having discussions as well. So we'll we'll keep you updated on that. That's not something that a decision that would be made until the long session next year. So over um, you know, sixteen months away, but just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Questions on that? Uh, legislative OSBA update. Who's starting that? Is that you, Don?
I think um Sarah should talk about the uh reception and then Nancy should talk about stuff and then I'll fill in any blanks if that's okay.
Sounds great. Thank you.
It was really great to um have our legislators there. Um, I was really thankful that Pam Marsh um had a last minute meeting that was a conflict, but she made an effort to come for that first half hour and really um talk. So um, I was really thankful for that. I was thankful for the um interaction that happened and the conversations that that got going and it it's if I know it's continued relationship and partnership and and talking to each other. And so I think we're really, I'm starting to see some momentum in um getting our rural voice and that perspective heard. And in the encouragement from the representatives uh to hear that. So um, thank you all for attending and being there and um. Yeah, I'm looking forward. Session starts Monday, so we'll start to see bills dropped right yesterday. So we're meeting with Greg tomorrow and and starting to look ahead to see what's going to happen during this sprint of um the thirty-five days of the session, start session. All I got.
Thank you, Nancy.
I just want to add that I really appreciated the collaborative effort to have different school districts represented. I really enjoyed the um youth symphony.
Oh, Grant's past.
Grant's orchestra, thank you. And um huge shout out to our student representatives who supported, served food, um stayed there. They were so lovely. They supported with, they made a really good effort to ensure that people had mics. So everybody in the room could hear. Um, some people just kept talking and um they were very safe. They you should have seen them. They were very, very, very um. So it just constantly reminds me of this like power dynamics where they're like, here's the mic and the person just kept talking. And he's like, okay, I'll just hold the mic. Um, you know, them being super polite and not wanting to interrupt. So I am grateful and I hope that we continue to do this. And I think it's really important to start to hear um different school districts. I think through conversations that allows people to really see the similarities and hopefully come together for a common cause. And to really ensure that we have that collaborative effort. Creating change is never easy, but creating change with limited resources, um it's even more difficult. And I think that when people really do can come together, meet in the middle, come to a common ground around different issues. I think it makes things easier and it allows for it allows people to see each other as partners in in an effort to create positive change rather than adversary. So I really, really appreciated that.
I want to jump in real quick and um we did it at the night, but I want to say how grateful I am to Dawn and Sarah. And all they do to um collaborate with the other uh groups that we interface with and to put that on. And I know it takes a lot of work and it just means so much that and also it it sets us apart, I think. Um, and the communication that you give to all the other school districts on a regular basis. I just want to give you a shout out because it's really appreciated.
Nancy, did you want to share anything about your trip to DC?
Oh, my goodness, there was so many wonderful things. Yeah, I'm happy.
In highlight.
Did um, did Don share about?
He was gonna fill in anything. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Don. Sorry, I got confused. Um. Let me see, where can I start? It was a really, really good opportunity for us to meet our local senators and representatives. Um, it was great to have OSBA executive um leadership team be there and represent the all the school districts here in our beautiful state of Oregon. It was nice to have those opportunities and just to listen what people are doing and to start to build relationships. I think the big takeaway for me was how do we start to build relationships? And how do we um, how can we understand this process to advocate for change? One of the main things that was talked a lot about was reading, of course, advocacy, um equity, artificial intelligence in schools. That was a big topic. There was a lot of really wonderful presenters. And again, thinking about the relationships that were discussed around building relationships with our local leadership and to augment that advocacy. There was so much info, so much um emphasis on the value of relationships between all the people that work in school systems with students and how much of a difference that makes. And I think that has been a reoccurring theme throughout the various conferences that we get to go to and participate. So. Yeah, I mean, there was there was a lot of things. Reading was a huge piece. Um. Limited funding was a big piece. I I'm trying to kind of stay positive and not just think about all the um insanity that's kind of coming up. But you have the value of relationships and how can we leverage what we have for the things that we might not have yet or the things that might be limited because of funding? What else would you, do you think it's valuable to share tonight, Don?
Um, I the all I think you covered it really, really good. Um, the only other things I would say was there was a theme of valuing ourselves and valuing our staff, um, some good slogans like you are a ten and we're all in. And the importance of of giving it your all and but also making sure that you're taking care of yourself at the same time. So um, and I agree, it was great to meet with the representatives and build relationships with them. Um, I wanted to piggyback on the legislative reception. I want to give Sarah props because she did ninety percent of it and I did like ten percent of it. So I really want to make sure that everyone knows that she was the rock star and I appreciate her. I've been busy with some uh OSBA. Now that I'm Secretary Treasurer, my plate got a little bit fuller and Sarah didn't hesitate to step in and say, that's okay. I'll 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 take charge. So I really, really appreciate it and I it's so great having um board members that look out for each other and um help step in and just are a rock star. So I appreciate you so much, Sarah.
Teamwork makes the dream work, which is yes, there was a huge emphasis on valuing um ourselves, but also valuing all the things that people bring in from every level of a school system. Right? Sometimes they think that we it's really easy to talk about like all the wins, but thinking about what makes those things possible. What makes that big work actually come to fruition? And it's really, everybody, it's bus drivers. It's the people that get to feed our kiddos. It's the um instructional assistants. It's so much. And we continue to say that there's such limited funding, but none of those things are possible without the help and the effort of so many of the people that we might not easily acknowledge or notice right away because they're kind of tucked away doing their hero things in a way that it's very quiet and honorable and noble. Um, but yes, ensuring that we value and if we want to continue to increase graduation rates, increase reading, increase math, do all of those things that Tiffany so lovingly encourages us to think about all the time. We need people and and we need those people to be taken care of and loved and appreciated. But also um, we need enough people to ensure that all those things happen because there's so many needs. I think that one of the things that is so different is that school systems have, this is my own personal opinion. School systems have become a micro community. I mean, you all do everything. You're the counselor, you're the doctor, you're the resource, you're the therapist, you're the food, you're the sheltering. I mean, education is no longer just about education, but it's really encompasses everything. It seeps into every other aspect of everybody's else's life. I mean, we got to hear from the Boys and Girls Club. We have a huge shortage of childcare and they're not just a childcare place. They're really an educational resource for us to ensure that there's a continuation of education when there are limits or distractions in the everyday, regular classroom. So. There's a lot. It really does take everybody to ensure that this community continues to thrive. And how do we ensure that there's funding to make sure that we do it all? Because it is, it is a lot. I mean, the other piece that was mentioned a lot in the um conference and not just the conference, but really every day is the need for mental health supports. Right? There's so many kiddos that. Really everyday is the need for mental health supports, right, there's so many kiddos that might be unhoused. That need a lot of um mental health support, there's a lot of dysregulation in classrooms. And I know teachers are doing the best to ensure that kiddos stay in classrooms and that there's learning. But there's so many interruptions throughout the day for a lot of different reasons, so. Again, huge kudos to the school systems and it's a lot.
It is a lot, um one of the things I I wanna, I had the opportunity, Brent invited me to go up to the OA COA conference. Um and uh Phoenix Talent, we did a breakout session on sharing our strategic plan. And I was able to share the board's role in that and share the work that we're doing to um in our own training and development. Um and just some of the other best practices that we really try to adopt and one of the things I talked about was legislative advocacy. It was really cool to be able to talk about the fact that our high school hosted a legis a regional legislative event. And um that, you know, I was able to say, I have two board members in Washington DC right now. Um and so I just wanna thank you all for um that time and effort and energy advocating for kids. Understanding that um you know, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, as the saying goes. And um you know, it's not an insignificant amount of time and effort that goes into those things and. Sorry, I wasn't able to attend the event, it's probably good that I wasn't there. But uh so I'm sorry I missed it, but thank you all for, you know, and I I know it was probably a really cool experience. Go to DC and do it, but it's also time away from your families and, you know, I think about that sometimes when I'm, you know, I missed swim. Class today, right, to come to the board meeting and that's, that's the work, it's all of us, you know, putting in the work for kids, so thank you for that, thank you.
One last thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because um I really appreciated in the Equity Symposium. This idea of we're not just here to serve kids that look like me or kids that look like you or kids that look like whomever else. It's how do we continue to do this work that serves all of the kids independently of what language they speak. The color of their skin, their physical abilities. Um how neurodivergent they are and it was that one of those things that really just. I do this work thinking about that or I try to provide a voice for individuals that might typically not have a voice. But I don't know, there was something that was really special about being at the conference that really just continued to center for me. What does all mean? Because I oftentimes have this idea. And not that I'm intentionally being in exclusive, but sometimes my own biases. Motivates me to talk about just, you know, such a small population, but I really think that there's such value when we. Can all come together and advocate for the different things that we have personal experience about and how lovely that was. And it was just interesting to see. Who was at the um conference on Saturday for the equity and then who was at the conference for advocacy? And the people looked really different and it just really reminded me where we are and how much more work we still need to do. So, yeah, this work is for all of the kids independently of whether we agree with a lifestyle. Or not, it is really all of those kids and that was just, it reminded me of my commitment. Of doing this work.
Awesome, love that. Um if it's okay, I I wish I had done this sooner, Scott, so thank you for your patience, but I'd like to just jump down to item. K six and talk about the um local service plan and Scott's not here to present or anything, but he's here to um answer any questions. Um should they come up, so um let's, let's move to that item and then we'll go back up um to K four after that. Um so um local service plan, I had a chance to take a look today. Um any thoughts or questions about that for this item? Brent kind of spoke on, so did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I didn't have anything to add and uh maybe Scott, you can just talk a little bit about um kinda if there's any changes in this and just kind of the process. And go from there and what you've done with your team, so.
Absolutely, all right, well, thank you so much for inviting me tonight, I'm really excited actually to be discussing this with you tonight. Because the strategic planning process and the feedback that you gave, not only in the board meeting. But when we've met with the district and through our strategic planning process, quite elaborate process that we had outlined in our mid-year report. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at, but we've built our local service plan with your feedback intentionally in there, so the. Changes that you see in the local service plan are strategic to us, we are not waiting for the plan to be put into place next year. Uh we've implemented things right away, you heard about the new teacher launch, I think there was a teacher here that came up and talked to me about uh their participation in it. Uh that's an ongoing thing, we've adjusted our mentoring program. Um we've really created, you talk about accountability, I call them feedback loops, we wanna hear, we wanna be able to get. Information and then we wanna be able to share that information back to you, so some of the things we've done. Um you know, we'll continue our cabinet meetings with uh with districts, we're now publishing proactively our cost sheets. On all of our service areas, um we're regularly updating our financials three times a year. We've built an online local service plan tool, so districts can log in and see exactly the services they're getting and the costs associated with those. And we're implementing an online satisfaction survey and we'll share those results with you, so we'll get to hear through a variety of mechanisms where we're giving you information and getting information back. Uh programs and service changes, some of the things I think you talked to me about last time, Division Twenty-two Library Services was a critical one. Uh that's built up robustly um for school districts, uh expanded support for CTE. Expanded student behavioral health and wellness and we've completely redesigned our special education program. We have a new student services division that's inclusive of all students. Uh and includes and involves our special education program and a new director for that division, that's super exciting for me. Um and we have a new initiative around data transparency, so uh a new student information system, so. Uh that's in pilot right now, you'll be able to look at the services that we provide for students, you'll know which providers are serving your kiddos. Um and yeah, it's really awesome and uh the online so local service plan tool I mentioned. And then we just released our Oregon project, which is an assessment and curriculum for students that are low vision. Or or experiencing blindness, uh that's been in paper and we've innovatively turned that online, it's not really a um. Data transparency, it's just something really cool for kids and it's, it's actually used across the world, so I'm excited to talk about that, so I could. Answer any other questions, but those are kind of some highlights.
Uh and there's another one, I don't know if it's ready for prime time yet, but um you read the paper recently, the. Federal legislation about Medicaid billing, um and so the ESD is looking at that, Kelly has. Uh Soder has had a number of meetings with staff at the ESD and really looking um at how that can benefit and recoup some. Uh much needed funds for for our district, so appreciate the ESD and I know they have commitments with uh Oregon Health Authority coming up. Uh after uh the first two years, so um that's another huge need, so thanks for your.
Dawn, go ahead.
Thank you, I was just wanting to tell Scott, thank you very much, I know that I asked a lot of tough questions um last time and I really appreciate. Um just like taking charge and saying thank you so much and and no hard feelings, we've had great conversations and. I know that you are and your staff are doing the best to um for our students and so I really appreciate. Um the way that you took away the information and just went full charge to make everything better, so. I really appreciate that and that shows a lot about someone's character where they just are like, okay, let's. Let's move on and let's get stuff done, so I really appreciate that.
Well, we wanna be of service and I really appreciate the feedback, honestly, and um yeah, we wanna be responsive and and we hope you see that, so thank you, Dawn. And thanks for speaking up so we could hear it and do something about it.
I wanted to ask, um what was, what did you increase in the CTE program um area, what was, what's changed?
Yeah, so we uh leverage Student Success Act dollars. And so with no additional charge to the local service plan for school districts that fund the CTE program. Uh specifically around Perkins programs of study, uh we've added one FTE. Uh as Superintendent Barry mentioned, we have half an FTE of a retired CTE teacher, Nat Ellis out in Clamath Falls. And then uh Avery Green here in um in Jackson Josephine County. Uh they're working uh to integrate uh CTE into the integrated guidance. Uh as well as taking off some of the workload of Brian Robin, so that he can spend more time with teachers. Uh in school districts, which is really where he was pulled away because of the increased CTE programs. Um because we all know CTE is a good thing and we're implementing a lot of it and kids are doing better because of it.
I'm gonna get um formulate the correct question for you. At OSBA, we went to a workshop with someone who you know very well and they talked about the new um. And is that something that um? Because it's a new Division Twenty-two standard that ESD is helping with maybe um supports in. Okay, are you tracking?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, we have Kelly uh Soder who kind of runs out for us. Um and he, they may have services with other smaller districts, but we have that, we do that, yeah, so. Good question, we try, we tracked you. I just, yeah, I just wanted to add, kind of piggybacking on what Dawn said, Scott, um. I feel very seen and heard, um I appreciate you taking our feedback to heart and. Um it it really speaks to this idea of serving all kids when you really take to heart the feedback. That a smaller district is sharing with you and make it such a big part of um the local service plan and service to all kids, so. Thank you so much for that and um really, really appreciate it, so thank you. And the mentor program is great too, by the way, um yeah, really, really cool stuff, it's so important. Um even though we all know you come out of um the teaching program completely ready, right, Chris?
Yeah. Awesome, anything else on the local service plan? All right. Great, okay, thank you for for that and um letting me bounce around a little bit, um we'll go back up to K four and equity diversity and inclusion.
Hi, hi, everyone, good evening, thanks for having us, thanks for hanging in there, um I have a variety of of updates I'd love to share. And a little bit later, we'll talk about a vehicle purchase for community care too, um first, I just wanna um. Uh it re- remind you, I think we've talked about this, but our EDI committee is doing a book study. Unconscious bias in schools, our administrative team has already participated in that. Um and so just really grateful for rich conversations, our next EDI committee meeting is February thirteenth. Um we'll be primarily doing um book study work and it just continues to be a really thoughtful group. Um and again, better participation than we had a year ago and I'm sure we'll have even have even more um representation next year, it's one of those things that really seems to be building. Um and I'm appreciative of everyone that's participating, um community care continues just to be out there meeting all kinds of needs. One of the things that we realized at Christmas uh at the winter break is, you know, needs continue to happen and and maybe even more so when we're out of school. So one of the things that we're looking at is ways to provide some points of contact, community care support during something like spring break and summer breaks. Um and maybe even some other resources in addition to like a vehicle example, I'm just kind of having like family resource support that can be open to the community. Especially when we're off off of regular school schedules, um so stay tuned more on that. You might remember last year, we participated um in a student success plan grant from ODE for LGBTQ student success. Something we were uh invited to um request a renewal on and it was a little bit slow, but we did get a renewal, which will will be good through the rest of this year. Again, it's really focused on belonging and support and connection, um student wellness, advocacy around that that um student population. They um our our grant is in collaboration with Central Point School District and Ashland School District, but we're really trying to offer support regionally as well. So we'll offer Unity Conference again and that will be May fourth. Um and I'm comprehensive counseling, I'll just jump on that, Kaylin talked about it a little bit, next week is National School Counselor Week, so give a shout out. Um our team is working really hard on on what you heard before, the multi-domain, multi-tiered scope and sequence. And today was one of our workdays, um they're just doing amazing work to really think about what all students will have delivered through our. Our our comprehensive counseling program, college and career, academics and then social emotional. Um the state of Oregon adopted state, social emotional learning standards recently. And part of our obligation is to have an implementation plan of those standards by July first. Um so that's driving a lot of the the comprehensive counseling work, but also it's giving us that time and opportunity to really map out college and career and academics as well. There's a wonderful conference that we're taking a variety of people to for counseling, um called the National School Counseling Leadership Conference. Coming up at the end of February and we have six people going, administrators and counselors. Um so that's a wonderful opportunity too, thank you, um last but not least, or almost last, um we're piloting a universal screener. Um through the School Based Mental Health Federal Grant, um you might hear a little bit about this, we're going to try it at Talent Elementary. It will be an opt-in, meaning that we'll communicate with the groups of classrooms and students that we're piloting with. And families will need to opt in to participate, um we hope to launch our first class February sixteen. The tool itself um is called the Check Yourself Tool, it's through an organization called um Reclaiming Futures. Which is out of Portland State University and um it's through another kind of platform called Ticket Health. It's a universal screener like we might give iReady, right, where we where we do that assessment for all. And the areas that we will ask students questions about are obviously mental health challenges, their depression, anxiety, um suicide ideation. Self-harm, things like that, but it also ta asks about like um kind of conflict with others and where they see themselves fitting in. And um grades and time management, who they have as connection and support. Um and as age appropriate, there are some questions about um substance use or abuse. Um those are completely anonymous results to anyone but us, so even though we we use partners um in that. The school, our school district itself, we're the only one that will see student results and then the tool allows us to screen. Intervene as we need to and then refer out to resources, so we're excited about trying that, seeing what happens.
I think you said Talent Elementary, but it's Talent Middle School, right?
Talent Middle School.
That's a talent middle school screener.
Yeah, we'll start with Talent Middle School, we hope to also try a high school class and get some information about that. Um that's it, I wanted to give a shout out, Black Youth Leadership Summit is um also coming up with um regionally, February twenty-second. And stay tuned for our um second annual Health and Wellness Fair, May eighteen.
You wanna just stay up there, I'm all about bouncing around today, um but um. Let's just talk about the the vehicle purchase and and Sarah, thank you for the great questions, I think they're good questions and and. I feel like we got some some good answers to that, so did did any any further discussion on the vehicle purchase? Or questions for Kelly?
I'm interested about the vehicle purchase, um. Is there? I know that the the team drives a lot, which is, I think, I think it's a really great idea. Um is there a plan to purchase more vehicles, is it just one vehicle and it's kind of on a checkout system, like what will that look like, what's? Once it's purchased?
Yeah, right now, it's the the requests is for the one vehicle, uh larger, six passenger. Um our folks are driving around a lot in in their personal vehicles and whatever kind of size that is and one of the things. Is sometimes we need to transport quite a bit or multiple people, um that's difficult in a private vehicle and it has been challenging to. Coordinate as other vehicles are being used in the district and to have them available and sometimes in these situations, it's not necessarily that's planned. It's not, it's not a need comes up that's not quite as planned out, um so it's something that we really anticipate being able to transport, you know. Families and and community members, but also using it for things like. So, it's something that we really anticipate being able to transport, you know, families and and community members, but also using it for things like. Thanksgiving baskets, right? And all of the the larger pieces when sometimes it would be really handy. This would be stationed at the, you know, the idea would be stationed at district office and could really be, you know, prioritized for our community care team.
I'm not sure I shared this in my response either, but talking to Maria Thompson today, we we don't have as many. Our students not able to satisfy field trips or some of them are at after-school events and extracurricular activities. So, that's why our vans are you being used. More and more and more. And so, that's that's another challenge about scheduling and some unpredictability, but. Yeah, we've been, thank you to Kelly for kind of looking into this. I know we've had questions back and forth with the state. We have the funding available and yeah, this is a key piece to kind of get our final questions answered from the state to see about doing this.
I appreciate you bringing up the first student because I wondered about that, like our our partnership with. That resource to, is that something that could be utilized? So, I appreciate you clarifying that.
Yeah, I would say also, you know, obviously with with students experiencing homelessness, this is another way that we can kind of mitigate that.
I imagine too that our community care staff is turning in a lot of mileage reimbursements and that's, you know. I think the rate is something like 63 cents a mile or something like that. So, that's one thing I thought of too, is I'm sure we're paying out a lot in. In mileage reimbursements for our staff, and that's a lot of wear and tear on their personal vehicles too. So. Yeah, I'm I'm very much in support of of this and. You know, even with potential changes in the future with this particular program. I think the district will still have a a pretty big need for another vehicle, so.
I think the insurance component as well, having. Transport happen in a district-sponsored vehicle versus private vehicles. Is. The Maslow House. Vehicle, this may not be the appropriate time, but since it may be used to some of my questions that Brent answered. Spoke about the McKinney Vento. Student population. And I've seen the Maslow van at the high school. Are. Can can you share why or are we be able to utilize that resource as well?
Yes, we we can't necessarily utilize that resource and. That is not something that. They go and get kids very often. We've, that's a. Something that they don't typically do, as we asked earlier in the year. About supporting that. That's why that little other van. Call it the whip for some reason. Was housed at the the district office, but now it's now those grad coaches are going out all the time. Kids, so. But we we don't have access to insurance reasons, those types of things as well, so.
I love that. That's it's that slang for for a car. You gotta get in with the. Your your vocabulary is kind of mid, Mr. Barry. Okay. Oh, my gosh, okay. Anything else on the car purchase?
I have a quick question about it.
Yeah.
Does it have to be a 2024 model? Like, is there, is there a? I don't want to say cheaper, but like a different option? Does it have to be like? That's that's my question.
Yeah, we get government pricing through a vehicle purchase program and so. These are, these are the options, buying, used is. We've done that for maintenance a couple times and it's. Put a lot of money into kind of maintaining those, so. Does it have to be? Probably not, but I think. Kelly's managed her funding and I think I put this in my response too. Everybody's, you know, spending their Esser money before September 30th and. This was a grant from an Esser type fund from the state and so. Yeah, so I don't know if that answered your question, but we do definitely have an influx of funds for this program. That would serve the needs, so.
Awesome, yeah, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. There is a request from John. To possibly. Suspend the rules on this. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the reason being because we have to order it and we do need to suspend the funds before September 30th and so. Sometimes it's. For example, it's been a while to get vans. We feel like we have some time on this, but. If if the board is willing to suspend the rules and make an action item, then we can place that order. Tomorrow.
So, could I entertain a motion to suspend the rules? To bring this to an action item and then we'll have to, we'll have to do that twice as as we are so accustomed.
I move to suspend the rules and move information and discussion item number seven to action item number three as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion? Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, and then a motion to approve new action item three. To approve the purchase of the vehicle for community care.
Wait, I'm.
What did we ever do before Board Book? Would you like, I can make the motion. You want me to make the motion? Let's see if I can do it. Okay. I move to approve the vehicle purchase for community care as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you myself. Thank you, Polly. Discussion? Okay, we will vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly? I vote, well, I'm not voting yet. Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yeah. Passed. I feel like I. I vote now. Okay, alright. There you go. Thank you for serving our students and I'm I'm sure this will go to very good use for that, so. Awesome. Okay, where are we? Five, back to five, criteria for evaluating superintendent. So, just for clarity, this is for not this school year, correct? Or is this, right, so this would be for the 24, 25 school year. We have to approve the. The form and the process that we want to use now. So, so. And thank you Denise for putting this up there. I think it was a good idea, given the presentation we had at our last meeting with Kristen to consider. Either going with the. And and we don't, we're not taking action tonight, but this is just for discussion. To consider utilizing the OSBA process versus our current process. Any comments on that?
I'm just so glad that we're going forward with this and we're making, we're gonna make this change and not talk about it anymore.
Just for budgeting purposes, are we thinking about putting, if we adopt this, is that the next convert, oh, I guess. Potentially putting in the budget. OSB, money to hire OSBA to help walk us through that process in, I guess it would be early 2025. Right, to facilitate that, yeah. And then just. Something on page 23, I was reminded when I was scanning this again, that. The superintendent will be presented with the final summary report from the full board, not the individual evaluations, which is just something so different. From how it's been previously. So, I think not only just for me, but just for a reminder. For all of us, because it's important that the board speaks with one voice in evaluating the superintendent. So, as we look to potentially. As we look to utilizing the previous year's forms, potentially following that format.
So, and I'm reminded of a session I attended at the summer conference. On superintendent evaluation. And one of the OSBA attorneys was there. One of the things she shared is that a board could actually. We could choose to not. Do the evaluation this year if we wanted to. And which was like, I was like, oh, are you sure about that? I asked her three times and she's a lawyer. She said, yes, not that all lawyers are honest, but. I trust the OSBA people. So, so that is sort of an interesting concept, given. The past performance of our superintendent. That could open up an interesting opportunity to start on this process sooner. In terms with. Working with OSBA and with the components like the quarterly check-ins and things like that, so we we. From what I understand, and and I could certainly go back and and revisit this and talk to the council and anything, everything, we want to make sure that we're. We're in compliance with everything, but. That could be an opportunity rather than going through the process of the old thing that we're not happy with anymore, to sort of. Meld next year's evaluation into this year and start on some of those. Concepts. So, something to think about, and I'm happy to get with. OSBA again and even talk to our council, but. That might be something worth strongly considering, especially for the. You know, we could start really weaving in our. Our strategic plan. We still have half a school year left, right? So, we can start, just sort of start the process of. Of that transition. And from what I understand, we are legally able to do that if we so choose, so. Brent, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but. Love to hear everybody's thoughts.
Yeah, we were in, we were in the same session and I think we're, I mean, we've just done that year after year after year. But it's not necessarily a requirement, so, and that was the first I had heard of that, so. So, yeah, I I mean, in our work session, I thought it was a great discussion. I I do think it. Really is is good timing and match up with our first year of a strategic plan. And. Yeah.
Thoughts, questions?
It's in board policy about the superintendent and then the boards, is the board's self-evaluation the one that's in board policy as well? That that's. But it's the timeframe. Does it say yearly or?
Yeah, I'll have to look. That's a good question. Thank you, as a good board member should, for going back to the policy. Yeah, we we can, we can look at all of that and if that's something that we're interested in, I I'll take the next two weeks and. You know, make sure we have all that information that we need, yeah. I think it does outline, but. I think it follows the law pretty closely and so. From what I heard from the OSBA attorney, that is an option we have and it just, it might make sense if we want to do. And I I know you are already budgeting for. More board development stuff and so that's already being worked on too, so, which is a good thing and it's a good investment. Yeah. Okay, so, we'll take action on that. If you think of anything else, any other comments or questions in between now and the next meeting? Please, please send it my way. I'll get with OSBA and I might even check with that too, just to make sure we're all good there. And that could be something that we discuss further. On the 15th. Dawn or Rebecca, did you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Nope, I just, I think the sooner the better.
Yeah, I agree. Cool, okay. Okay, item eight. I don't know how I've done it, honestly. Yeah, we're still here though. Okay, item eight, June 20th, board meeting.
Sure you want, don't want to go to nine?
Maybe, it could.
We have, COSA is having their 50th annual end of year conference and it's the 20th through the 22nd. And so, proposing to move this meeting. Possibly to the 18th, Juneteenth is a holiday and. So. If that works, we can look at doing an action. Item next time. We we could push it to the next week too, but I don't think I will be in town that next week, so. The June 18th would be the proposal. Or the 17th, Monday or Tuesday that week.
Yeah, me too.
Tuesday would work better for me.
Okay. Good to know. That's the 18th. Okay, great. No problem. Item nine, local wellness. Brent, did you wanna? Ah, local wellness, it's the gift that keeps on giving every year. It's good though. It's important.
Yeah, this is a actually a requirement to review every year and there are some updates in language. There was some red language, obviously, that's required. And then there's some optional language and. Staff choosing not to. Implement four through nine. If it's optional, we like to not necessarily have. That in in policy on our policy, but there is a blue section in there that we feel like is important to. Incorporate.
Any comments on that? What, can you tell me a little bit more about the, you know, because reading through all this stuff as a board member and. You know, the value of physical activity. Why did we want to not include those items?
We have to do this anyway. Sometimes it's just a Division 22 standards and things of that nature and so.
It's just a matter of not having it in this policy, but it is required. Okay, good. I was reading through this, going, I don't know if I want to cross this stuff out. Did you die?
Sorry, I wasn't clear. It's not that we don't have to, we're not required to do this. It's just not in policy. A lot of this is Division 22.
Got it, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any questions? Alright. The next. Draft of the next meeting's agenda is there for your review. Just make sure, yeah, criteria, service plan. Local wellness, okay? Great, yeah, go ahead.
Just a reminder, I will not be, I'll be at the National Superintendent Conference, so I will not be at this meeting. For the action item of criteria for evaluating the superintendent. Tiffany will be sitting in with me and Jessica and Tiffany will be in the executive session, so.
Do you want me to text you and tell you what we decide?
Do we need to add the board meeting date changes and?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
There is on it. She's also on it. Thank you, Sarah. Okay. With that, we are adjourned. Good night. With that, we are adjourned. Good night.